We have the January 6th, September 6th, 2016, New Brunswick City Council. You have ordinances on second reading, 603 Initiative Petition Orders to amend and supplement revised general ordinance of the City of New Brunswick Title VIII, Chapter 56, provided for paid sick time and paid safe time within the City of New Brunswick. Ordnances on first reading, you don't have any of them. You have Resolutions, 601, approved objective amendments, 602, approved payroll for 8/6/16 to 8/19/16, to 8/20/16, to 9/3/16. 603, authorized refund for redeemed tax sales certificates. 604, authorized application, execution, and acceptance of grants. The Jersey Division of Highway Traffic Safety, the drunk driving enforcement fund grant, 2016. 605, approved off-premise raffle, 5050, 126 College Avenue in Rutherford, New Jersey. The Children's Specialized Hospital Foundation, date October 9, 2016. 606, approved off-premise raffle merchandise at $126 College Avenue in Rutherford, New Jersey. The Children's Specialized Hospital Foundation, date October 9, 2016. 607, authorized property lien for board security. Location, 228 Commercial Avenue, Lot 215, Lot 22, amount 2,05832. 608, approved request for solicitation of funds requested by Rutgers University Habitat for Humanity Campus Campus Chapter. Date is September 2015, 2016. Excuse me. October 1, 2, 9, 15 and 16, time 2016. Time is 12:00 PM to 6:00 PM. Locations, George Street and Church Street, Douglas Road and Ryder's Lane. 609, approved Chapter 159 budgeting service. City of New Jersey Department of Law and Public Safety for 26 drive server or get pulled over. Statewide Labor Day Crackdown, amount is 5,000. 610, approved amendment resolution R 081617, reason to pay additional legal fees in the amount of $16,66328. The Apollo Law Firm, Special Counsel, City of New Brunswick versus Harback Construction from $100,69979 to $117,36807. 611, approved request for Eastern City Property requested by Teladana American Tele-uh-uh Association, CTAT, location, Boyd Park Amphitheater. For celebration of Ba'fukama, Kama, sorry if I'm pronouncing it wrong. Moral Festival by Hindu women of Teladana. The date is Sunday, October 9, 2016. The time is 11:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Boyd Park and the time for amphitheaters, 12:30 PM to 2:30 PM. Police extra duty. 612, approved request for Eastern City Property requested by Millses County Homes and Health Services. The location is War Memorial Library in Park. Prostate Cancer Awareness and Education, Tuesday, September 20, 2016. Rain Day, Tuesday, September 27, 2016. Time is 7:30 AM to 10:30 AM. 613, approved request for Eastern City Property requested by Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Incorporated. Location, Blue Oak Park Pavilion, annual fundraiser event with friends and family. Date is Sunday, September 11, 2016. Time is 3:00 PM to 8:00 PM. 614 is held to request the administrator. 615, approved request for Eastern City Property requested by Sigma Kappa Samaria. Location, Blue Oak Park Mansion Law Area. Sisterhood Retreat Field Day, date is Sunday, October 2, 2016. Time is 12:30 PM to 4:30 PM. 616, approved amendment resolution R 081610, paying additional legal fees in the amount of $1,445, by Ben McAlpin. Detective Grant Grevis in the matter of Derek Detrick Dietrich Stoll for City of New Brunswick from $5,706 to $7,151. 617, approved requisition to advertise, preferential delivered gate valves and, uh, appetizers. How do you say it? Purposes, okay. Purposes for the ward utility, specification number 55916W. 618, approved amendment resolution R 051578, reason asbestos abatement and roof replacement for the ward utility with hatch with mop and car. Engineered design services for the DNR canal and Westinville Pumping Stations upgrade, not to exceed $25,200. 619, approved work contractor, Central Jersey Coalition, doing business as Elizabeth Truck Center. Auto body repair for the 2015 White Ford Econoline cargo van for the ward utility, not to exceed $5,032737. The Millses County Cooperative Purse See Program, CK12, Millses, Central Jersey Coalition, doing business as the Elizabeth Truck Center, not to exceed $5,032737. 620, approved payment for emergency procurement, Parks Department for Western Service, Blue Oak Park Pavilion, Sal Electric Incorporated, not to exceed $17,00610. Purchase order number D 90089. 621, approved payment for emergency procurement, ward utility, we place three fire hydrants with Garrison Enterprise Incorporated, not to exceed $35,73818. Purchase order number D 90115. 622, approved payment for emergency procurement, ward utility. Two broken sore ladders by Wobbe Street off of Drift Street with Navy Contractors Corporation, not to exceed $5,000. Purchase order D 90471. 623, approved amendment resolution R 081624, reason to pay additional legal fees in the amount of $1,195, to Minister of Minister, Police Officer Andy Weiss, in the matter of Rodriguez, First Police Officer Andy Weiss. From $26,61955 to $30,81455. 624, approved work of contracting, main access system incorporated, furnace delivered installed, one security system for the Division of Recreation, Hug Tech Center. Specification number 534-16P, not to exceed $11,14375. 625, approved water grant for rehabilitation home improvements, one grant for Jerline and Willie Brimage. 383 Comstock Street, not to exceed $30,000. 626, approved water contractor, all seasons maintenance incorporated for cleaning of lots, term is September 7, 2016 to October 7, 2016. Specification numbers 455-15P, not to exceed $8,5994. 627, approved fiber optic cable agreement in right-of-way use agreement requested by CSC TKR LLC, DPA, doing business as A Division of Rockin Valley. Reason installation of fiber optic cable. 120 Nielsen Street, Riverbank Apartments. 628, approved relaxation of the city noise ordinance requested by Telecable. Reason installation of fiber optic cable at 4650 Barrett Street. Day, Saturday, September 17 to 24, 2016, and October 1, 2016. Ultimate date, Saturday, October 8, 15, 22, 2016. Time is 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. 629, approved requisition to advertise, furnace delivered installed insertion valve, line stops, emergency valve repair, and replacement for the ward utility. Specification number 56016W. 630, approved payment to Hogan Walvo, Moran Thugs Dukas, LLP, Bradley R Forens for hearing officer, disciplinary action of Travis Holfish, not to exceed $810. 631, approved work contractor, Gold Type Business Machine, doing business as GTBN. Rate, prior term store floor license for the police department. Term is 12-month period commencing October 1, 2016 and ending September 30, 2017, not to exceed $3,200. 632, authorized purchase by police department under the NASCO Value Point Computer Contract Number M 0483. State contract number 89980, wireless communication electronics for five arbitrator, 360HD, not to exceed $34,57705. 633, approved work contractor, Taser International Incorporated, for digital video forensic software for the police department. Specification number 53616P, not to exceed $6,875. 634, authorization to transfer $1,467,760 and 7000 in BP grant funds in the county of Millses related to the New Brunswick landing project. 635, approved work contractor, Institute for Forensic Psychology. Psychological services for the police and fire departments. 12-month period commencing September 7, 2016 and ending September 6, 2017. Specification number 52616RFP, not to exceed $18,000, fair and open. 636, approval of setting a price for sale of t-shirts at the 36th Annual Rockin Murders[537.02][537.02][S01. Festival. 637, approved work contractor, Bakery Taylor Incorporated, books purchased from a wholesale distributor for the public library. Term is 12-month period commencing September 7, 2016 and ending September 6, 2017. Specification number 52516RFP, not to exceed $50,000, fair and open. 638, approved off-premise raffle merchandise at PSENT Children's Specialized Hospital, 200 Somerset Street. Children's Specialized Hospital Foundation Incorporated, date is September 30, 2016. 639, approved off-premise raffle merchandise at PSENT Children's Specialized Hospital, 200 Somerset Street. The Children's Specialized Hospital Foundation Incorporated, date May 20, 2017. 640, approved amendment resolution R 041659, change order number two, with Duane Contract Incorporated for Railroad Avenue Pump Station, approved. Specification number 846-14R, amount is $8,77733. Approval of this change order will not constitute an increase of 20% or more of the amount of the original contract. 641, approved request for Eastern City Property requested by Colab Arts. Location is Boyd Park Festival Fundraiser Event, date is Saturday, October 1, 2016. The rain day is Sunday, October 2, 2016. Time is 10:00 AM to 9:00 PM. Police extra duty. 642, approved amendment of resolution R 081641. Preparation of the preliminary official statement and the final official statement for the issuance of $25,523 in bond anticipation notes, dated 2/27/2016 and maturing on June 6, 2017, with Samuel Klein Company for 2015 municipal order, not to exceed $10,500. 643, approved request from Terran the Talenteal, ribbon and sign campaign in the Center of New Brunswick to create awareness for ovarian cancer and its symptoms. Dates are September 7, 2016 and September 30, 2016. 644, authorized tax collector to transfer several taxes and utilities credits on several properties. If you want more and finer support, I think that's enough. That's all we have, Mr. Attorney. Thank you. I'll have the clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Council Vice President Fleming.
Here.
Council President Egan.
Here.
Councilmember Escobar and Councilmember Garagi are absent.
Please be advised that the notice required of the Open Public Meetings Act has been complied with and satisfied that the annual notice, which gave sufficient notice of the time and place and conduct of all public meetings in the municipal council of the City of New Brunswick, has been filed with the city clerk, has been placed on the appropriate movement board in the lobby of City Hall in New Brunswick, New Jersey, and has been transmitted to the official newspaper in the City of New Brunswick, namely, the Home News Tribune. Please stand in the place of leave.
Our plebeian allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for whose stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, we'll have a moment of silence for our men and women serving in our armed forces, for our men and women in our forces who lost their lives in any battle or conflict. We have minutes from June 15. I get approval on the minutes?
Set.
Roll call.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming.
Yes.
Council President Egan.
Yes. Okay, we're going to move right into the ordinance, 603, which is an initiative petition ordinance to amend and supplement revised general ordinance of the City of New Brunswick Title VIII, Chapter 56, provided for paid sick time and paid safe time within the City of New Brunswick. So I know we have a lot of people that want to speak on this topic tonight, so I'm going to ask everybody when they come up to be as brief as they can and make their point as quick as they can. But first, I would like to have our economic development, Glenn Patterson is going to get up and explain what the ordinance does now and how we have it in the City of New Brunswick. Mr. Patterson.
Thank you, Council President. As you know, back in January, the city passed a sick pay ordinance, and it has been in effect since April of this year. It covers the vast majority of workers in the City of New Brunswick, were in firms with five or more employees, and has different tiers as to the number of hours that persons would earn. One of the unique portions of our ordinance is that it covers temporary health service firm workers who are transported out of town. These are the employment agency workers who may work for an agency here in town but might actually be physically working in Cranberry or Edison or someplace like that. We have had this ordinance in effect now for about five months. We've had 14 complaints or preliminary complaints come into our office. To date, our sick pay administrator, Maria Cody, has been trying to mediate those with the employers and the employees. Been successful in most of those, and some of them are still ongoing. Subsequent to that, the Workers Family Party has introduced an ordinance to replace the city's existing sick pay ordinance, and this ordinance deletes the language that provides for the temporary health service workers who are transported out of town to be covered. That was in section 3.6 of our ordinance, and that language is deleted. The Workers Family Party has gotten sick pay ordinances adopted in a number of towns in New Jersey. They've decided to go after a town-by-town strategy to promote sick pay in the state of New Jersey. The City of New Brunswick agreed to support that idea, and we came up with a formula that we felt best fit the City of New Brunswick. Our language differed a little bit from what they had in some of the other towns, but generally covers the vast majority of the workers here in New Brunswick. As I said, one of the things we covered was the temporary health service workers. We also included safe time for persons who are dealing with domestic violence issues. In their ordinance, they picked up that unique language that we had, and then they put that in their petition ordinance.
We had that first.
Yes.
We were the first. We didn't somehow adopt that ordinance in that particular.
Yes, yes.
Okay, go ahead.
In crafting this ordinance, we worked with local community activists such as Unity Square, Esperanza. We talked to local businesses, both big businesses and small businesses, and we got a number of our local government people together to work through this ordinance to try to craft it to fit New Brunswick's specific situation. The ordinance that is being proposed by petition, however, the petitioners did not discuss that with local government. As far as I know, they didn't reach out to the community activists that we talked to here, Unity Square and Esperanza, didn't talk to the business community in town. So it ended up having some, well, I believe, errors in it where workers that we are covering, who are a significant portion of our workforce and are the most vulnerable part of our workforce, would not be covered under their ordinance. So that is what is being proposed there. There has been, I know, some discussion, and there may have been some last-minute discussion. I know Mr. Shami was talking with some of their representatives about amending the language of petition ordinance. Looking at the statute and looking at some case law, we don't believe that the council has the power to do that. Section 186 of the statute says that the circulated petition has to include the full text of the proposed ordinance. So if you change the ordinance, it's that ordinance that can then goes to the voters isn't what the people who signed the petition signed up for. You can't read the petitioner's minds to know why exactly they, why exactly they signed that. And if you allow the council to make changes to what the petitioner signed, that is a very slippery slope. It's not only something that this group might want to expand what is under their current ordinance, who would be covered, but also allow the council to make other changes that the petitioners may not agree with. So there was a court case on this that the appellate division came down with about two years ago in a Jackson Township case, where they talked about how the Faulkner Act, which is what the city is organized under, under state statute, that that act has strong policies protecting the initiative and referendum process so that you can't change what the petitioners signed, when they are, or the people who are signing the petitions signed, so that they don't sign one thing and then there's not a big switch and they get something later. And the court, in that case, said the court didn't have the power to make those kinds of substantive changes to the act. They can only act on something where it was jurisdictional or primacy against the law. The same rationale applies to the city council. You don't believe you have the power to make those kinds of changes, and it's probably a good thing that you don't, because then people can't play with what the petitioners circulated and what people signed. So that's where we are tonight, and I guess we'll hear some opposing opinions.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. Mr. Shami, as a, he's not an attorney now, your, as your legal opinion, he plays one on TV.
He's not an attorney.
So in your legal opinion.
I prepare him very well.
Your legal opinion, first of all, do you agree that there's a difference between our ordinance and what is proposed, is that their ordinance does not provide for the section, whatever was 334, about the outside workers getting temp agency as we provide in the City of New Brunswick?
That's correct. The initiative petition ordinance specifically deletes that language, and the initiative petition ordinance specifically provides that in order to be covered, you have to actually work in the City of New Brunswick. The ordinance that this council adopted back in December carved out an exception to that for the temporary health firms where someone would work outside of town, be transported. Actually, there's a hybrid in the section three as well, where they work part out of town and part in town, they could still qualify for benefits. So that is a significant difference from the initiative petition ordinance and our current existing ordinance.
I know. Let me just ask one other question now. Do you also, or you wanted the belief that if they wanted to change the language now to reflect that we cannot do that as a body, because we would be changing something that the petitioners, you know, didn't, you know, sign on to, as you would say? We don't have the power to change that. That's a major change that we cannot, that we cannot do as a body. Is that correct?
Yeah, it is correct. I was just going to address that.
Okay.
For purposes.
Are you scared about reading your mind?
Yeah, it's just very scary. For purposes of the record, and I know we'll make this a little video record in here, there is a case, Mr. Patterson referred to it, out of the appellate divisions here, reported in 2014, which dealt with this type of issue. In fact, it was an action by the governing body and the mayor to try to change an initiative ordinance before it went to ballot. Signed as 437 NJ Super 203. And specifically, the court relied upon the Faulkner Act provisions, which talk about initiatives and referendums, and indicated that there's a strong public policy favoring the right of the voters to exercise their power of initiative. And the court goes on to state that unless it's sufficiently defective legally, that such that it can't be placed on the ballot, they're not going to touch it. And in fact, this particular case had reversed the trial court decision that attempted to do that. And they looked at language that I spoke to the petitioners group about this evening, that they are relying upon, which talks about substantially in the form presented or requested. And that is what we're really talking about. Any change that would be substantive, in my opinion, would cause the ordinance therefore to be defective under the initiative petition ordinance and therefore be a violation of the law. As the council to seek to amend it, Mr. Patterson said, this is the will of the petitioners to sign the petition, and it has to go to the voters, assuming it does get to that point in the form that it's signed in.
Thank you, Mr. Shami. Do you have anything else you'd like to add?
No, no.
Time before the public here.
A lot of this moment.
Okay, thank you. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we'll now move to who would ever like to comment on this particular ordinance. Who would like to comment from the public on particular ordinance 603? Please step up to the microphone. I know we have a lot of people. Please come right up, identify yourself. Thank you very much.
All right. So my name is Adi Yemigham, the Director of New Jersey Working Families. I'll keep it brief, I think, for our organization and the partners that we've worked with. Our main concern is ensuring that amended workers actually have coverage. New Brunswick should be lauded for the work that is done on those spaces. However, the reality is that the blackout dates created for the allowance of blackout dates, particularly food service workers, the carve-out of healthcare employees, per diem nurses, temp nurses, essentially people who are at the front line of healthcare provision, food service, childcare, localities that have less than five employees, all of these are actually carved out of your ordinance. We've explained to you, and we've tried to share with members of the council, that we are, would be 100% supportive of an amendment that actually met both the intent, as explained by the municipality, which is to include and protect all temp workers, as well as expand that coverage to other workers. My understanding is that in terms of the avenue to do so, the council could make an amendment in second reading to its ordinance, or to the ordinance in front of, in front of them. We would be supportive of said amended ordinance if it extends our coverage to these critical workers, like I said, temporary nurses, per diem nurses, expanding to small businesses. I think ultimately, although, you know, we may not agree on everything, the concept of expanding coverage and protecting public health is at the forefront. So I know Mr. Shami had expressed that he had some questions before the beginning, so I don't know if I should raise it up, or if set questions have been addressed before I step in.
Mr. Shami, do you have any questions?
I have a couple.
Go ahead.
You just made reference to it, but I really would like to know, I think the council would like to know, why did the initiative petition ordinance eliminate the benefits for the temporary service workers?
So we submitted your petition to national partners and statewide partners and different legal experts who have actually passed and written these ordinances across the country, and all agreed and understood that the way your language is written, the fact that you include this phrase actually worked in New Brunswick, precludes all these other pieces. And so there was, let's say, to use, borrow the words of inartfulness in that particular language, that, that according to experts who have done this nationally and who are experts on this, on this particular subject area, it makes all of the other provisions moot. It was not your intention, nor is it our intention, to replicate that piece. And so it would be, the same legal scholars are telling us that it would be a non-substantive change to just eliminate the word "actually." And, excuse me, the elimination of that word "actually" would be sufficient to ensure that workers who are doing work, who are employed in New Brunswick, because essentially, according to the state, and I know you actually know this probably better than most, given your labor background, temp agencies are actually defined as co-employers. So if you have an obligation for all employers and you eliminate that word "actually," then you have the ability to say any employer with any employees are now obligated to cover X, Y, Z for these workers, and it would include that group. It's both your intent, if you look at the preamble of our, of our petition, it is stated as our intent to expand and not curtail. And so our, again, all of the legal scholars that we have spoken to have said that word, that elimination would be non-substantive, would meet your objectives, would meet our objectives, and would allow coverage for an expanded number of workers.
Who's talking? Excuse me. What?
I think I'll translate.
Oh, I'm sorry. I can't.
And if you'd like, I'll do it. I'll summarize the Spanish.
No, you're doing great. No, you're doing great. Don't.
To look a little better.
What, I believe Ms. Yemigham is speaking about is our ordinance. We're not talking about amending our ordinance, we're talking about the initiative petition ordinance, which is up for consideration for the council, and that will ultimately, if not active on that, the council have to be considered by the voters.
So, Mr. Shami, as you well know, I'm sure, just to flag and clarify for folks, there is, there is almost like a parallel, there's like a parallel process going on. The initial process, of course, gets initiated with submitting this petition, but until, until the completion of its second reading, it's not even a ballot question petition, et cetera. The council can make non-substantive changes in second readings to any ordinance. This would be, could be treated as any ordinance, and the council would be able to make as long, before the completion of this hearing.
I think I just went over that.
Did any of the committee of the petitioners, why didn't they sign the petition?
We honestly, it was probably oversight on my part, so I take responsibility.
So the committee petitioners that got the petition, none of them even live in New Brunswick, is that correct?
That's, that's not, no.
Is it correct or not correct?
I do not believe, that's correct. Our petition has, was circulated by registered voters that.
Really? So the circulators, the circulators are off in New Brunswick?
Oh, you're saying circulators, not committee petitioners. So you, you do understand that volunteers can circulate the petition.
I didn't say they weren't doing anything. They were just.
And we had... So we had some people who circulated the petition that either participated with unions that we work with or with organizations that we work with, students that we work with. So it was, you know, a group of people who had the time to circulate the petitions during the day.
I have a question in that particular area.
But I would take ownership over that.
Well, talking about taking ownership, we have gathered information, okay? That, and I think you'll probably agree, there are 24 petition packets. Twelve of the 24, you are the signer as the witness of those particular petition signers. Information has come to us that you were not the witnesser of those particular packets.
Yeah, okay, so we...
And you stand here and tell me that you actually saw those people?
I don't live in New Brunswick. I don't live in New Brunswick. I did help process and sign and get people activated to this petition. And as I understand, you already certify, if we're going to get into an argument over certification, then I want to...
Why would you ask me?
Yeah, we did certify, because we rely upon someone who swears that they saw a person sign the petition, and then another republic swears to that person's signature. So I'm just trying to ascertain if this information is correct or not, and tell me...
I processed several, and I worked with the, with two, was it two notaries? To notarize and process and data enter all of this.
But did you, I understand your word "process", but did you actually, were you signed as the person who witnessed the individual sign the petition? Were you actually the witnessing party as to all of those petitions where your name exists?
We had, we had a group of canvassers and partners who were canvassing for these signatures, and I processed all of these.
I understand the process, but I just want to ask you a question. It's very simple. On the bottom of the petition, it says...
May I ask, what is the intent? No, no, I, because here's the, here's the thing. The bottom line here is this question of what is the purpose? If I understand the purpose, then I can continue to stand here and answer your question. I feel like I have answered the question.
The purpose is we rely upon you...
Well, I would say that I answered the question.
Okay, you're done then. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. You know, there's only 11 municipalities that have this in the state of New Jersey. And for, you know, people to come back here, and none of the other municipalities have anything for temporary agencies, which is the biggest problem in this place. None of them do. And for these people, for you guys to come back and eight months later to our city and say that we have a problem with our petition is kind of, you know, a little laughable in a way. Because we cover the people that we cover in the city, because they're the people that need it the most. And all the other, all the other towns don't cover temporary agencies. So just keep that in mind.
They do.
There you go. Come on. Anybody else like to comment on a particular ordinance? Step right up. Anybody else on a particular ordinance? Come on, come on up.
Hola, buenas tardes a todos. Mi nombre es Reinanda Cruz, y soy miembro de New Labor.
Hello, good afternoon to everyone. My name is Reinanda Cruz, and I'm a member of New Labor.
Ah, nosotros, la organización New Labor, tenemos, en nuestra base, la mayoría de trabajadores de agencia.
So as an organization, New Labor has as our base, the greatest majority of our base being workers from agencies?
Y para nosotros y los trabajadores realmente es bien importante que esta ordenanza que se logró aquí en New Brunswick no sea revocada, porque realmente los trabajadores de agencias sí necesitan una protección.
And so for us and for the workers, the most important thing for us is that this ordinance that we now have in New Brunswick is not revoked, because worker, agency workers do, yes, need these protections.
Y realmente le agradezco el consejo municipal, porque tomé en cuenta a los trabajadores de agencia, que es algo, un logro muy grande que se hizo en New Brunswick, y que realmente hago la invitación a todas las organizaciones, que no estén echando individualmente, y que lo podemos hacer a nivel estatal para lograr cambios más grandes.
And so I want to thank the city council of New Brunswick for taking this action to protect agency workers. And I want to ask everyone, individuals, and organizations that, to come together so that we could work on a state level to take even greater action.
Y realmente gracias, y no queremos que los trabajadores de agencias queden fuera de la ordenanza. Necesitamos esta ordenanza, porque realmente los trabajadores de agencias son los que ganan más por una acción.
And so, and so, thank you. And we need to make sure that agency workers are not outside of the policy, because they're the ones who have it worse in the city.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Anybody else? Anybody else on the order? Step right up. Come on up, sir. Anybody else who'd like to speak on it, who'd step up to the microphone before we have the vote?
Buenas tardes, soy miembro de la honorable Asamblea Municipal de la Ciudad de Nueva York.
Thank you, secretary of units of the honorable members of the council of New Brunswick.
Mi nombre es Manuel Droscolom.
His name is Manuel Droscolom.
Soy residente de la ciudad de Nueva York de New Jersey.
He's a resident of the city of New Brunswick, New Jersey.
Y soy un trabajador de almacén por agencia.
He is a worker in a temp agency for an warehouse.
Por más de seis años.
For more than six years.
Y la ordenanza presente...
The proposed ordinance.
Ha sido un paso de avance.
Uh, would be in advance.
Pero no ha cubierto a todos los trabajadores como debe de ser.
Oh, sorry. So the present ordinance was a good milestone moving forward, but it did not cover all workers as it should.
Hay un problema muy grande al lado en este momento.
There's a big problem in this moment.
Y somos víctimas...
And we're victims...
De las agencias.
Of the agencies.
De la forma en que está relatar a la ordenanza presente.
And the form that the ordinance exists.
Ahora mismo...
Right now.
Yo tuve que salir del trabajo...
Right now I need to leave work?
Por enfermedad.
Because it's so sick.
Relacionado al trabajo, pero como yo no lo quiero reconocer, yo no puedo trabajar cuando estoy enfermo.
It was related to work, but, you know, they don't like to recognize that stuff.
Y fui a la agencia para la que yo estaba trabajando.
And he went to the agency where he was working.
Y le dije que me dieran unos papeles para el doctor. O sea, le llevé el papel que el doctor mío me dio, como que yo no podía trabajar por unos diez días.
And they helped him get a referral to a doctor, because he couldn't work for 10 minutes.
Y ellos se negaron.
And they said no.
A darme los poquitos días que tenía.
I had to give him a few days that he deserved.
Del cinco de mayo para acá, a cumular.
Yeah, so the five days that he had to return.
Cuando se empezó esta noche la reunión...
When tonight's meeting started.
Aquí se juró lealtad a la nación americana y a la bandera de Estados Unidos de América.
Of the flagulation to the Black United States.
Y en las palabras finales decía...
In the final words, it says...
Libertad y justicia para todos.
Uh, freedom, liberty for all.
Y si creemos que tiene que haber libertad y justicia...
Uh, that there should be a level of justice.
En esta noche, no es solto.
He did, thanks.
Con todo el respeto que se merece el Consilio de la Ciudad de New Brunswick...
Is that sent to city of New Brunswick?
A que se pase la enmienda...
That it has the ordinance.
Que cubra...
That covers...
A todos los trabajadores...
All workers.
De la ciudad de New Brunswick, y los que son empleados aquí por las agencias, con base aquí en New Brunswick, y los llevan a trabajar a otras ciudades. Pero el sitio de origen es New Brunswick. Por tal razón, esa enmienda debe cubrir a esos trabajadores, mientras las agencias se están tapando de que no, porque no están trabajando en New Brunswick, no quieren pagar.
Yeah, so...
Eso es todo lo que yo tengo que decir. Solicito muy respetuosamente a todos los honorables que aprueben esa enmienda, y muchas gracias por todo.
Oh, wonderful. That you have this ordinance that covers all workers, which, this is my editorial that Working Families is proposing, which doesn't, in fact, cover all temp workers, and we ask you to pass your...
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Anybody else? Step right up. Please step right up.
Hola, buenas noches. Mi nombre es Montilla Hartkin, miembro del proyecto Esperanza.
Good evening. My name is Montilla Hartkin, member of the Esperanza Project.
Estamos hoy en esta noche agradeciéndoles a ustedes por haber tomado en consideración a nuestros empleados de agencias.
We're here tonight, first of all, to thank you for having taken into consideration temporary agency workers.
Pero también exhortarles a nuestros compañeros de los sindicatos.
But also to ask our friends from the unions.
Que por qué no es unir, unirse entre sí para poder buscar una mejor solución para nuestros trabajadores de agencias.
Uh, that they can come together to look for a better solution that covers temporary agency workers.
Yo creo que la actual ley que está ha beneficiado a muchos trabajadores de agencia.
Uh, the current law has benefited many agency workers.
Y creo que si se quiere expandir más a todos los trabajadores...
And if we're able to expand it to more workers...
Deberíamos trabajar todos juntos.
Then we should work together to accomplish that.
Creo que debemos descentrarnos todos entre sindicatos y trabajadores de agencias y proyectos que hay en la ciudad que apoyan a los trabajadores.
And we should all get together, those working for unions and community groups and folks working for agencies.
Enfocarnos en toda la comunidad, en todos los lugares. Hay mucha discriminación en las agencias.
And really come together as a community and focus on what's going on in agencies where there's a lot of discrimination.
Creo que los proyectos aquí en la ciudad están muy agradecidos por la ley que pasaron, pero hay que hacer valerlos los derechos.
And we are, the community groups here in the city are very thankful for the laws that have been passed, but we know that we really have to work to make those rights matter, make those rights be respected.
Y otra cosa, como persona, como seres humanos que somos, yo quiero pedir a nuestros sindicatos que están al frente de nosotros, en todo a nivel estado, que por favor, escuchen por mejores derechos.
And I'd like to ask, as a human being, to all the unions and groups working at the state level, that they really come together to fight for the rights of workers.
Y que beneficien a nuestros trabajadores.
In ways that benefit workers.
Y más los de agencias que son más discriminadas.
Above all, agency workers, who are those who suffer the most discrimination.
Es todo por mi parte. Gracias a ustedes por tomarnos en cuenta siempre.
That's all I have. Thanks, as always, for taking us into consideration.
Thank you.
Sí, muy buenas tardes.
Good afternoon.
Mi nombre es Norvia Perez.
My name is Norvia Perez.
Soy parte de la riva del grupo Esperanza.
I'm an active member of the Esperanza Project.
Y esta tarde estoy aquí porque quiero lo mejor para los trabajadores de agencia.
And I'm here today because I want the best for temporary agency workers.
Son las personas que más necesitan, que más pasan tanta necesidad en las calles, y las agencias abusan de la gente. Nosotros quisieramos, estamos muy contentos por la ley que se pasó, por lo que nos aprobaron, por la que también fue un beneficio para el trabajador.
Uh, and it's important that it covers, that it covers agency workers, because those, they're the ones who suffer the most discrimination. And truly, we're very thankful for the achievement that we were able to accomplish here in New Brunswick, including temporary agency workers in our ordinance.
Lástima que Working Families tomó una decisión tan precipitada, no tomó en cuenta los grupos que están en New Brunswick, que están trabajando para New Brunswick, para mejorar, y salir un poco de tanta pobreza que hay en las agencias, que está provocando las agencias.
Uh, it's a shame that Working Families did not consult with the local community groups before they took this step, and to make sure that temporary agency workers were covered.
Muchas gracias, gracias al consejo por escucharnos y por tomar en cuenta un poquito lo que nosotros opinamos. Somos, no somos un sindicato, somos parte de la, de partes que ayudan a la comunidad, y sabemos la necesidad que hay en la calle.
And we thank you so much for taking us into consideration. We're not unions, we're community volunteers, working of our time, and that know what's going on in our streets and our community. Thank you.
Gracias.
Good evening. I'm from New Brunswick. My name is Yara Womichael, and I'm a Senator Women in Work. We did research with the organization New Labor that did find, in fact, lots of discrimination at the agencies, lots of problems with abuse of unpaid workers, and discrimination especially against female workers. And I think that this is a big problem, but unfortunately, the issue of discrimination is not addressed in those ordinance. And I think that's just an important point to take note of. You know, there has been research on paid sick leave ordinances across the country, and they find that by having carve-outs, by having blackout dates, that often workers are left out. And the important thing is that we are seeing the benefits of this paid leave ordinance amongst workers that need it the most, especially restaurant workers, as there are so many restaurants in the city. And unfortunately, there's aspects of the carve-outs, blackout dates, that mean that this is something that is still, basic days are still inaccessible to those workers.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Councilor President, I just want to clarify, there are no carve-out dates for restaurant workers under the city ordinance. It only says that if you're a restaurant worker and you're going to take a specific holiday off, then you provide support or documentation to your employer. There's no carve-out dates for restaurant workers under our existing ordinance. There's no blackout dates.
Thank you.
My name is Jonathan Smith. I'm executive vice president for the Union of Rogers Administrators, and we represent over 2,300 employees at the university, which is their home bases here in New Brunswick, New Jersey. I'm also a lifelong resident of the area, grew up in the city, and I feel, as a union rep, in my role as a union rep, as one who grew up during the civil rights movement, and as a woman of color who has seen discrimination firsthand, I think to be equal, you need to be equal, there should be no exceptions made. I think you should move forward with this proposed ordinance. And I, even though you made the argument that there is no carve-out or no blackout, when you make exceptions, that is the equivalent of a carve-out. And I remember speaking at the last time that we met here about the issue of restaurant workers and of the other things, or hospital workers, the nurses and medical care workers who are part-time or contracted, and they're being a problem. Illness is no no bounds. They don't carve out who they affect and who they don't. And so I think you need to go forward and support all. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Brian Powers. I was a member of IBEW for 14 years. And over the last couple of years, I've been advocating for a $15 an hour minimum wage across the state of New Jersey. So two things. I mean, first off, what you do here at a local level really does matter. And I think we've seen that with the $15 an hour minimum wage campaign. And we did get townships and municipalities and counties to support it first, and that did translate into a greater good. And we're seeing 15 be considered statewide right now. And the second thing is, I mean, anybody that knows the history of labor law in this country can clearly see that exceptions put into these laws always seem to target women, people of color. And even by the people that testified before I got up here, you can see who you're clearly... who you're clearly affecting by making exceptions to these laws. So I'm urging you to cover all workers, that all labor has dignity and that if we're going to raise up the working class, we shouldn't be making exceptions for that. And I thank you for your time and consideration.
Good evening, my name is John Comley, I'm from New Jersey Time to Care Coalition. I actually came here today with my own statement, but I'm going to read instead from a statement from CIU, CIUR, because unfortunately they couldn't make it tonight and I feel like healthcare workers really need to be heard in this debate, especially because per diem workers are currently not covered by the law. I'm not going to read from the entire statement, I'll provide the text for the members of the council to read on their own. I just wanted to highlight this section. "The benefits of earned sick time do not just accrue to the employees or family members who are sick. In a city like New Brunswick, we share our spaces intimately and we know that flu viruses can live on surfaces like the glass that your waiter hands you, or the cup you're handed at a deli, or the pole you touch on a bus. These laws exist to protect workers as well as the general public." And it's worse to leave out workers who work in the home healthcare fields, in child services, in food services. These employees are frequent contact, are in frequent contact with one another and with the general public and indeed with populations with immune systems that may already be compromised. This can have dire effects for the spread of illness. And that's why we are in support of the revised ordinance proposed by the petitioners and against the carve-outs currently in the New Brunswick ordinance. By restricting access to the temporary workers, hourly and part-time workers, and especially the industries of home healthcare, child services, and food services, the current New Brunswick ordinance is not just an outlier among earned sick time laws passed across the country, it substantially weakens the public health protections of, for the general public. So I'm going to provide a statement for the members of the council to read on their own.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Mr. Egan, I clarify what Mr. Shammy did earlier, our ordinance does not carve out home healthcare workers or food service workers, they can get the benefits to...
It has blackout dates that affect them, it has...
As you said, there are no blackout dates in the ordinance.
Thank you. Everybody might think it's an opinion there. All we're saying, all we're saying in our ordinance is that you guys are providing documentation, it's not blackout. We certainly didn't have...
And certainly that's not restricted to a low-wage worker, at all.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Sure.
Hola, buenas tardes.
Hello. Good afternoon, you guys should know that by now. We'll start with us.
Les agradezco por habernos tomado en este momento para hablar con ustedes otra vez.
Thank you for this time to speak with you guys once again.
Me acuerdo cuando esta ley paso hace tres años.
I remember when this law originally passed a year ago.
Not even a year.
Not even a year ago, menos que un año.
Sí, menos que un año, okay.
Inside.
Me acuerdo que, bueno, yo he trabajado por 20 años casi en New Brunswick.
At that time I worked about 20 years, almost all here in New Brunswick.
Y este año me acaban de pagar más semana de días de enfermedad.
And this year they started to pay my week of paid sick days.
Gracias a ustedes.
Thank you.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Sergio Ramirez.
Good afternoon, God bless you. My name is Sergio Ramirez.
Yo soy trabajador de la agencia, he trabajado más de cinco años por ello.
I'm an agency worker, I've worked for more than five years.
No tenemos días de enfermedad, no teníamos vacaciones, no tenemos nada.
We don't have paid sick days, vacation, or anything.
Y no quisiera que la ley fuera revocada porque cuando nos enferman nuestros hijos, pues tenemos días de trabajo, lo votan de trabajo.
And so we don't want, I don't want that this law be replaced because when we get sick, we could lose our, our kids get sick, we could lose our jobs.
Si no tenemos los días de enfermedad que ustedes han dado, los votarían de trabajo, nuestros hijos aguantarían hambre hasta que buscáramos otro trabajo.
And so without the protections of the paid sick laws that you guys have given us, our kids, you know, they fire us from work, we're asking that kids would have, would be hungry and we have to look for more, for different work.
Entonces sería bueno más bien que adumbraran uno o dos días más por el año de enfermedad.
And so, we want to talk about changing it, maybe make one or two more days, paid sick days per year.
Muchas gracias y espero que hagan muchas juegos para que la ley no sea reutilizada.
And thank you and God bless you and have a great day. Thank you.
Anybody else in particular? Anybody else?
Hola, buenas tardes. Hoy voy a hablar en inglés y también español para que todos aquí me pueden entender. Hi, good afternoon, I'm going to speak in both Spanish and English so that everyone here can understand what I'm saying. Yo trabajo no aquí en New Brunswick, sino en Princeton, New Jersey, como maestro en las escuelas públicas allá. I don't work here in New Brunswick, I work in Princeton as a teacher in the public schools there. Y yo no tengo días de enfermedad pagados. I don't have paid sick days porque soy un obrero part-time. Because I'm a part-time worker. Y estoy aquí porque le importa a mí qué tipo de ley existe aquí en New Brunswick porque tiene una significancia para todos en este estado. I'm here because what kind of law we have in New Brunswick matters for all workers in the state of New Jersey. Y aquí estoy aquí en apoyo a los cambios propuestos porque sí vamos, sí, sí va a cubrir los obreros de agencia todavía, pero también va a cubrir los obreros part-time. And I'm here speaking in favor of the proposed changes because yes, they will still cover agency workers, but they will also cover part-time workers. Y eso son mis, mis... Sí, mis palabras, and that's what I have to say. Good evening.
Good evening, members of the council, my name is Evelyn Leethman, I'm the associate state director for AARP. We have approximately 1,500 members here in the city of New Brunswick and I want to applaud the council for your effort today to bring earned sick time to workers here in the city. We're particularly concerned about caregivers, in-family caregivers who are caring for loved ones, whether they be elderly or their grandchildren. We support expanding the ordinance to include all workers because all workers, regardless of where they work, the size of the company, or how many hours they work, have loved ones that they need to care for. We encourage and we support closing the current loophole in New York.
Thank you.
Buenas noches, quisiera darle las gracias a ustedes y al alcalde porque en verdad tomaron muy en serio la propuesta que la misma comunidad propuso.
Just want to thank you as members of the council and also the mayor for really taking seriously the proposal that the community itself put forward.
Sí, en verdad es diferente al estatal de los días de enfermedad, ¿por qué? Porque en verdad la comunidad se adherió o fue cercanas a los que trabajan en factoría aquí en New Brunswick.
And it's true, there are differences between the Working Families in the state version and our version and a lot of that is due to what we see and what we experience being close to workers in our community.
Y en verdad es una lástima que ahorita estemos presentes aquí por esta situación que se ha dado, que como ustedes mismos han visto, porque en familia está, nos trajo hasta aquí y eso queremos, ustedes han escuchado todos los puntos de vista de aquí.
And it's unfortunate that we've gotten to this point with these different points of view and how the Working Families proposal has brought us to this point.
Ahora dejado la invitación a ellos, que encontremos una solución para arreglar todo esto porque como hemos visto ya ni ellos saben lo que están proponiendo.
And we ask that they come to the table as well to try and find a solution to this problem because it seems that they haven't understood the consequences of what they proposed.
Y en verdad la comunidad estaba muy contenta con esta ley, sí es cierto, queríamos que cubriera a todos los trabajadores de agencia, pero como dice el alcalde, no podemos tener contentos a todos, ni nosotros estamos realmente satisfechos, pero también el alcalde puso las razones.
And it's true that we weren't necessarily 100% satisfied with everything in the original ordinance, but we felt good about the, where we, what we had reached, what we had accomplished and we understood if we didn't entirely agree with some of the points that the mayor made.
Así como dijo la señorita señora que hablo primero, que esto fue un trabajo de abogados y de encuesta, entonces esos mismos abogados que nosotros como la comunidad no tenemos estos recursos para estar en abogado, entonces así como fue todo esto, así queremos que los mismos abogados ahora y todos los grupos, que en verdad yo creo que somos mayoría los que estamos conformes con esta ley por ahora.
And, you know, we don't have the resources of a lot of lawyers, but... And we don't necessarily have the resources to hire lawyers to prove our points.
Por eso es un, yo creo que en estos tiempos es buena idea, o han hecho buen trabajo todas las organizaciones, New Labor, Unitary Square, Proyecto Esperanza, ellos yo creo que como están aquí en la comunidad, nos conocen y conocen a la comunidad y al trabajador de las agencias y en todos los, las necesidades de aquí de la ciudad, por eso es diferente la, los días pagados, la ordenanza.
And we know that as community groups, New Labor, Esperanza Project, Uni Square, that we've come together and we've really worked hard in this ordinance, we understand the needs of workers in our community and that is the reason for the particular focus on agency workers in our ordinance.
Y como me preocupa, como dice, como acaba de calcar, que aquí el consejo no tiene la autoridad para, para dejar la ley como está, que tiene un proceso, entonces eso me, nos preocupa mucho a nosotros.
And we're worried about what was highlighted earlier, that the city, the council may not have the power to change the proposal as it's been put forward.
Por eso esperemos que en todo como se habla y como se ha plantado la situación, esperemos que, que nos apoyen, Family War también, porque ni, bueno, por lo que he escuchado, no, las firmas que han entregado y hemos tenido estas pláticas anteriormente y las encuestas también, como dicen, no los hicieron, es temiendo de la comunidad. Esperemos que encontremos una solución para estar más tranquilos y para, en verdad que se necesita todo esto porque...
And we hope that we really can come together to find a solution for everyone, knowing that it appears that, you know, it wasn't our community members who largely collected signatures for Working Families.
Y tal vez no vendrá al caso, pero esta ordenanza y estos trabajos que se han llevado al beneficio de la comunidad, nos, nos ponen un poquito más tranquilos, como ustedes saben, la política está fatal contra los hispanos, entonces gracias a ustedes que nos toman en cuenta aquí en esta ciudad.
And we're really glad that you take us into consideration here in the city because sometimes it seems like politics are stacked against us as Latinos.
Muchas gracias y en verdad esperemos que se apoyen.
Excuse me, time's up. Thank you, chica.
Thank you.
Buenas noches, voy a ser breve.
Good evening, I'm going to be brief.
Mi nombre es Milagros Esli.
My name is Milagros.
Soy miembro del proyecto Esperanza.
Member of the Esperanza Project.
Bueno, yo en diciembre del año pasado estuve aquí cuando se lanzó la ordenanza de los días pagados de enfermedad.
Last December I was here when the paid sick leave ordinance was passed.
Me sentí muy feliz.
I was very happy.
Pero como ahora va a ver la revocación...
But now we're seeing, we're worried about the law being revoked.
Es una preocupación para toda la comunidad que trabaja en las agencias.
It's a major concern for folks who are working out of new agencies.
Entonces yo le pido en una forma muy especial...
So I ask you in a special way...
Que se haga justicia y ya basta de humillaciones.
That justice be done for our workers.
Humillaciones, me refiero en el sentido de las agencias y las factorías.
And that we put an end to the humiliations really that agency workers have to go through.
Y yo creo que todos tenemos el mismo derecho.
I believe that we all deserve the same rights.
Muchas gracias y que pasen buenas noches.
Thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you.
Hi everyone, I'm John Digham, I'm the president of the State Federation of College Democrats. I come today on behalf of my executive board as well as student workers, I do major in economics and major studies and I work part-time at Jimmy John's. And this issue is important to me because I'm afforded a lot of insurance through ACA, but if not, I would not have it. So my organization and myself want to stand behind the proposed amended to its ordinance for those who serve us, serve New Brunswick, and we wanted to say briefly that we'd like you to consider the changes. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, Craig Garcia, I'm from New Jersey Working Families. A lot of you might recognize me, I used to work for New Labor and I was an advocate for temp agency workers here in New Brunswick for a couple of years. And I work on this earned sick days campaign. One thing I want to be clear, because I think there's a lot of confusion around this ordinance, I mean, the position of Working Families is that all workers should be covered, including temp agency workers. And that includes temp agency workers that work outside of New Brunswick. We sent a memo to Mr. Shammy to the council making it, no, I didn't send it to him, or I didn't send it...
Well, you said, I don't agree with your interpretation that you're about to give.
I understand.
You can take and do it.
Yep, I do. So, there's nothing in the proposed ordinance that excludes workers. It clarifies that the purpose of the ordinance is to expand the right to workers. The section that I've heard you repeatedly point to that you claim excludes the workers that work outside of New Brunswick, we removed the section that said that those workers would be treated as part-time workers because we believe that temp workers, regardless of whatever, they should be, if they work the time, they should earn the same time as any other worker. Now, I mean, a question comes, if this council is so concerned about covering temp workers that work outside of New Brunswick, why were they classified as part-time workers instead of full-time workers? Why don't they get the full time that everyone else does? I mean, that seems strange, if the huge concern was there, right? I think all these problems could be avoided if we didn't take a perspective, and I reject anyone's perspective, that turns workers against each other, this has happened way too much in this country. There's an opportunity here to cover all workers. Apparently, the council did not mean to say "actually work within the city of New Brunswick" when it designed the accrual mechanism for the ordinance. So take out that word "actual" and then all workers are covered, you bring all these folks together, you do the right thing for all workers in this city. It's that easy. You have a legal right to it. If you want to say you don't have a legal right to it, that's, in my personal opinion, that's a political position but not a legal position.
Are you a lawyer?
What?
Do you want to turn?
I am not a lawyer.
Okay.
No, I mean, listen, you're totally going to disagree with me because you clearly do. But the thing is, you can, you can cover all workers and do the right thing, creating a part-time regime where you carved out part-time workers, not just per diem nurses, but all temporary health workers and, or all temporary hospital workers. So if temp workers matter so much, why were temp workers that work for the hospital specifically carved out of this right? I mean, health workers, people who work around other workers, why? I mean, the point is, the design of the ordinance by carving out certain workers seems rather than the benefit of the entire community, which would be, since, which give all workers three to five sick days, temp workers who works outside of New Brunswick, restaurant workers that work here in New Brunswick. All these workers could be covered and you could do that here tonight, but if you don't want to, if you don't agree with me, there's nothing I can do about that, this will go through the ballot. There's a solution, another solution, because I'm trying to be private here. If we pass this ordinance, right, you can go ahead and cover, do a separate... can go ahead and cover, do a separate ordinance that covers temp workers, right, that supposedly are not covered under the proposed ordinance, which again would not be covered on the original ordinance because of this whole mechanism of actually workers have to work actually within the city of New Brunswick to accrue those hours, right, what you could do is pass a temp agency bill of rights ordinance, and you know what that would do, you could guarantee those temp workers paid sick days and you can cover them under, the one thing I want to really commend this council for is passing that anti-wage stamp bill, or anti-wage ordinance, that was incredible, unfortunately it doesn't cover temp workers, you can license temp workers in this town, pass a temp agency workers' bill of rights if you feel that you can't do all the right things to workers today, but here's the clear message, do it for all workers, thank you.
Mr. Shammy, I just want to note that Mr. Garcia speaks about some confusion over the ordinance, the confusion may actually lie in the narrative to the proposed ordinance, which talks about things such as providing home health caseworkers, childcare workers, and food service workers full-paid sick time, you already had that under the ordinance.
Except if they work for a small business.
Excuse me, don't interrupt when somebody's speaking, okay?
I have a question.
Excuse me, what?
Oh, I thought he was asking a question.
No, he was, he was, nobody asked you a question.
Apologies.
You would assume from reading that that there's no benefit provided to those class of individuals, and there is under the ordinance, yeah, there's a requirement that you have to have five or more employees in order to come under the ordinance, but the confusion I submit is perhaps in the proposed ordinance description as well.
So, did you want to, you don't want to answer?
No, thank you.
No, no.
Next speaker, please.
You really don't, so I'll just say.
Hold on, did you hear what I just said?
What?
You're done already, he just made a statement.
Okay.
Step away from the microphone, let somebody else speak, thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the council, Charles Cradville of New Brunswick, I'm the editor of New Brunswick Today Community Newspaper, as you know, this is a really important discussion we're having tonight, I'm really glad that I came here, I'm really glad that I had a good seat and I'm able to hear everything that's going on, my first question is where's the other forty percent of the city council tonight?
Mr. Cradville, we're here to talk about the ordinance, you want to get on the ordinance? We're not here to do attendance records, so get on the ordinance if you want to speak about the ordinance.
I'm being respectful, sir, there's no need to use your voice.
We have a good flow of conversation here, you want to know where everybody else is, get the ordinance, on the ordinance, please.
If I can explain myself, I think it was just two weeks ago or three weeks ago that all five members of the council voted to schedule this special time for the meeting, I'm just concerned, if they voted to have the meeting at this time, why aren't they here, are they okay?
Mr. Cradville, you're wrong about that interpretation, we had to have the meeting at this time, there was no vote on it, we had to by law initiate a petition, the council can correct me because I'm not a lawyer either, but we had to have it at this meeting, no one had to vote on it, now, I'm going to ask you again, speak on the ordinance.
Can you just please ask your attorney if what you just said is correct?
It is, if you don't think twenty days, you couldn't do it tomorrow, then you had to move the meeting to today.
So there was no vote on it at the last meeting?
There was a vote to change the meeting schedule, but under the statute we were required to have a second reading on this ordinance today.
And did the two folks who couldn't make it tonight say that they, say that, did they vote in favor of having the meeting at this time, the hearing at this time, they did, are they okay, why, where are they?
Mr. Cradville, move on, please.
Okay, if the council adopts this measure tonight, will the council be able to amend it afterwards, or is that prohibited under the Faulkner Act for a certain period of time, if so how long?
Mr. Shammy.
If the council were to adopt this ordinance, okay, as it exists, okay, there would be the ability to amend it in the future, the three years wouldn't apply, but if this council doesn't adopt the ordinance in its current form, then it has to go on a ballot, it can't be amended for three years, so my point is, is once you start to put amendments to it and then assuming it doesn't get adopted and goes to the voters, it's considered, under the case I cited about an hour ago, would be problematic under the statute.
So if the council votes in favor tonight, and then at their next meeting, next two meetings passes an ordinance that changes this, that would be kosher under the law, so if there was a problem with this, the need to be amended, the council could pass it tonight and then amend it as early, so all you need is two meetings to amend it, right, you don't have to wait three years.
We have to, we have to go back and amend our existing ordinance.
Yeah, if we vote for this tonight, then we just all do is amend the existing ordinance to be this ordinance now, right, is that correct? I say that, I concede your point.
Right, then the council mayor could make further changes as early as they wish, right, they wouldn't have to, they wouldn't be barred from making further changes like they would if you vote no tonight and it goes to the voters and the voters vote yes, then you would be barred from making any changes to it for three years. Okay, something to consider, I'm glad I asked.
Unless there's another initiative petition signed by another group of people that does it all over again.
Sure, anything's possible, so the, you know, I have some experience with Faulkner Act petitions and it's pretty interesting, I wanted to ask, the last time this happened was a petition to ban fracking, and is it true that the city approached those petitioners and proposed clarifying language or changes to their petition?
I don't have specific recollection, but I think that petition was withdrawn, the city council worked with the group and they came up with a new ordinance that addressed everyone's concerns, and that is adopted by the council, but not by the initiative process.
Not by the petition. So the petition was actually withdrawn?
That's my recollection.
And a subsequent ordinance was drawn?
It was worked out.
I think that sounds, I agree with that.
Okay, I don't recall seeing that happen, but perhaps my memories are correct, so what was the extent of the changes in that ordinance that was ultimately adopted?
Mr. Cradville, we're talking, can you get to the ordinance that we're speaking about, please, can you want us to recollect about the fracking ordinance, get to the point of this ordinance, please.
It seemed at the beginning of the conversation there was some dispute over what counts as substantive changes, and this has come up in other ordinances before, and I'm just curious what the past history has been, were there substantive changes made to the fracking ordinance, or were all the changes not substantive?
If the ordinance was withdrawn, it wouldn't make a difference.
Yeah, that wouldn't make a difference, this is a different, this is a different...
Right, my recollection is that it wasn't withdrawn, so, and Mr. Shammy's not certain that it was, so...
I'm not certain either way.
Is there anybody in the room who could tell us how this last one worked out, because I think that would be relevant.
We have three more, Mr. Cradville, we don't have the information.
Be too late by then.
You should, you should call somebody if you want some information about that.
I've been trying to call you for a while, you're only turning calls.
I don't think so.
I call you, I mean, I'm here.
Mr. Cradville, on the ordinance, please, it's running, actually your time is over, Mr. Cradville, you're over five minutes, no, I'm sorry, I'm going to go. You're not getting to your question, I just wanted to get...
So, I assume the council and others in the process to devise this law that was passed here, that you looked at the other towns in New Jersey and what they passed, can somebody say definitively, do any of the other paid sick leave laws in other municipalities cover temporary workers who might be working part of their day outside, part of their day outside?
I say they, I, they do not.
And what is your understanding based on for that?
Based on my understanding, well, Mr. Patterson, go ahead.
We got copies of the other towns' ordinances and looked at them, they don't, they don't address it.
I'm sorry, what was that?
We had copies of the other towns' ordinances and they do not cover people that work outside of this other towns.
And did you check with the municipalities to see if that was there, if you shared that interpretation with them, or is that your reading of their ordinances?
I spoke to every municipality.
Mr. Marchetta spoke with every municipality and that's what they told them.
They all said that their ordinances did not cover temporary workers.
Outside the city.
Outside the city, that's correct.
They explicitly said that.
Double secretly explicitly, Mr. Cradville.
Okay, I just, I just want to know what we're dealing with here, next question.
As I recall, you applauded us when we adopted this, you thought it was the greatest thing in the world, now, now, what's the matter, right?
The record might reflect differently, actually, if you look at it, so approximately how many per diem or temporary hospital workers work in New Brunswick on an average day that are affected by this discrepancy between the two proposals?
Anybody have that information, I mean, number of medical people, Mr. Pat, anybody have that?
We don't have that information.
Wouldn't that be relevant to know how many people are being carved out of the ordinance, I would expect you to have known that last year when you passed it, but especially going into this, tell me, how does the city determine how many employees a business has under the current ordinance?
Mr. Shammy?
It's based upon the hours that they work, there's a specific formula in there which I'm not going to quote, I don't have it in front of me, but you can certainly read it, that determines who's considered full-time equivalent, part-time equivalent, therefore you want to make sure you capture every employee in their capacity as their employee, and make sure that someone can't just say, well, we got ten part-time employees, therefore we don't qualify.
I wasn't clear on that, what's the methodology, how do you find out, do you ask the employer and they self-report how many employees they have?
Oh, that's your question?
Yes, how do you find out how many?
Well, yeah, we, Mr. Patterson, how do we find out, how many people?
Well, it's their payroll records.
Yep, sorry.
Payroll records.
You obtain the payroll records, they have to, they have to provide them?
Yes, okay.
And tell me, if, say, I work in a bodega and my boss owns two other bodegas, and each of the bodegas has four employees, do I get paid sick time, or do I work at a company that's carved out, how does that, how's that decided?
Does anybody understand that question, Mr. Cradville? John walked into the store and bought four apples, he didn't want them, he gave them all, I'm sorry, I don't understand the question, Mr. Cradville, I don't get what you're saying.
So if my employer has multiple locations, but each of the locations has less than five people?
It's the same company, Mr. Cradville.
It's under the same, it's under the same company.
However, if that individual had separate companies or separate corporations, I suppose you could say they work for separate companies.
So if bosses wanted to, they could create multiple LLCs and have less than five employees of all of them and avoid paying paid sickly.
They could have in any context whatsoever.
That's alarming then, that's a, that's a way to avoid giving the benefit that you were supposedly seeking to give to people, tell me, if someone works two part-time jobs that are less than twenty hours a week each, are they eligible for paid sick time?
Mr. Patterson, do you understand?
By the employer, it comes through the employer, so if they're working ten hours for one employer and ten hours for some different one, they would not be covered.
If they work three part-time jobs, would they be covered?
Time is up, Mr. Cradville, we'll answer that next question, Mr. Patterson.
It's the same answer, I don't know what, Mr. Cradville, it's based on the employer that you're working for, as healthcare in the United States works through the employer basically.
Well, then this is a concern, thank you.
Anybody else on the ordinance, anybody else?
Representative of New Brunswick, I would want, my name is Alex Higuitares, I belong to the thirty-two V I S unit, today I'm no, as a manager, I'm a supplier, you know, I have kids, and all the things that I do is for my kids, benefits are good for people, for workers, for people, and I believe that if we improve this, we can get good results, you know, like, people is getting always better when they are treated better, so I'm going to be like grateful with this, but I just want to support the community, I want to support all people who needs this benefit, and it's all about, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Oh, that guy repeats speakers, John, you can't have that, you need people that have spoken in it, I'm sorry.
To speak and, there could be a just comprehensive reform.
The what?
A just comprehensive reform.
Anybody else on the ordinance, anybody else? Seeing nobody else.
Oh, who are the ordinance?
You gotta stay on the side which you're moving, you're moving to a job, then you're moving to a voted man.
We're moving to this vote, right?
You have to vote one way or another, you have to state what your vote is, and you vote without one.
Council?
We're voting on the second reading of the ordinance. It has to be a motion and then a second, either one way or another. They don't know, then you have to get a second.
Okay, motion. Second.
What is the motion? Is the motion to deny the ordinance or to accept?
I'm inclined to, can I say something before?
Yes, sure you can, true.
We did a lot, we worked a lot on this ordinance, on the original ordinance that we had before us, and I remember people coming before this council and thanking everybody that worked together on the ordinance, because it wasn't top-down, it was more so bottom-up, where everybody worked together on the ordinance, now we come back, like we said before, we joked that the ink isn't even drying on it, and then we have something else put before us, then we have language that says, then we have language that says, okay, maybe we can amend it, maybe we can't, we go back and forth, I say we err on the side of caution because, I mean, the way I read it, that we can't amend it because that's nothing was put before the signatures, the people who signed it, that's the way I look at it, if I sign something, if somebody puts nothing before me and I sign it, that's what I signed off on, not nothing that's going to weaken it or strengthen it, because yes, we can say right now, we can say right now that, okay, we can, we can strengthen this, but if we come back a couple weeks later and it goes back the other way, then there would be conflict, because anyway if we start going, start amending things that people signed originally off on, that's a slippery slope, that's more than a slippery slope, we're down that slope already, so I'm inclined to go with, with the original ordinance, where the community, where we, where we worked together on it, and we, we had it, and I believe that that was strong at this point, so I'm inclined to vote no. Motion to vote no.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson.
I am, I'm not comfortable with the council passing this, I'd rather give it to the voters, so no.
Okay. Councilmember Fleming.
No.
Councilmember Eaton.
No. Thank you everybody for your comments, we look forward to having it on the, on the ballot in the election in November, thank you very much, we have resolutions, we have resolutions six oh one to six forty-four and we're holding six fourteen, would anybody from the public like to comment on the particular resolutions, if we step up on the resolutions, anybody on the, yes, sir, Mr. Cradville?
Good evening, members of the council, I'll try to be quick, first one is the six ten, the formal offer is now over a hundred grand they're making, what's the status of the case?
Well, I also have questions, and I spoke to, I made a call to Mr. Shammy today, and he assures me that this is the right path that we're taking, with, you know, the amount of money that we're paying out is, is, is no comparison to the amount of money that these people are trying to, I don't know what the right word is, to get out of this and recover from this new ordinance, so with that, Mr. Shammy, do you want to speak more on that?
Just briefly, with the council president, I think I sat in this council at least two or three times and advised the council that these bills are not going to be cheap, in fact, they indicate that the cost will go up, we need to take experts, the special counsel, and we have to pay triple A, their arbitration fees, this is a case that the plaintiff is seeking a seven-figure settlement or recovery, millions of dollars in damages against us, which we feel is not based in law or its back, so I understand it's costing us a lot of money, but the matter has to be defended, in my opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Shammy.
And in what way has the plaintiff alleged the city breached its contract?
I'm not going to give any litigation of the matter, Mr. Cradville, as you know, pending litigation.
Pending litigation, we cannot speak about it at this time.
Okay, speaking of pending litigation, six sixteen is more money for Grant Fregus' attorney, what's the status of this case, still in discovery, is the plaintiff been released from jail yet?
Mr. Shammy?
I don't know anything about the plaintiff being released from jail, but I know the matter is still in discovery, I believe.
The matter is still in discovery, sir.
Can I ask about the next one, the delivery of gate valves and person, presenances for the water utility maybe?
Yes, this is really just replacing the stock for valves throughout the city.
And the next one, the asbestos abatement and reef replacement, is this related to the other asbestos abatement at the water treatment plant, or is this new asbestos, and if so, when was it discovered?
No, it's unrelated to the asbestos at the treatment plant, this is at the mill pumping station, it was found, we had asbestos shingles. It was found, we had asbestos shingles in one of the roofs, so that's called for redesign of the roof.
And when was that happening?
Quite frankly, it was found back in the spring.
In the spring?
It's taken a while, and we didn't have enough sufficient in the pump station.
And Mont McDonald, that's not a type, will they change their name again?
Yes, they changed their name.
I guess it's that time of year. All right. How about the emergency in Bugle Park, six two zero? Is, can you tell me what the emergency was? Seventeen thousand dollars of electric.
It was an emergency purchase. The electric system at the pavilion was in bad shape. It had become somewhat unpredictable when some of our groups who come in here and ask for permission to use the pavilion, they would blow the circuits by plugging in coffee pots and things like that. We were starting the season where the pavilion is used frequently, so we brought the services of Sal Electric, who is under contract with us. We had them come in under an emergency, we didn't put it out for bid, we brought them in, had the work done within a two-week period, so that the first applicant back in early June was able to, excuse me, have an event with a, without any problems at the pavilion.
So it was an upgrade to the pavilion, because we do have, as you see in our meetings, people get married there, people have events there, so we upgraded it so they wouldn't trip the circuit all the time, I believe. Thank you.
Thanks for the explanation. Next one, six two three, there's more legal bills for, this one's for a police officer who shot someone, this is thirty thousand dollars now. What stage is this case at?
Still in discovery as well, Mr. Council President.
Still in discovery, sir.
Discovery, three years afterwards.
Unfortunately, those cases take a long, long time.
Understood. Okay, so six three zero. So what rate does Bradley Correns charge the city for his time as hearing officer?
He needs two hundred and fifty or two hundred and seventy-five dollars an hour, don't quote me on the place.
Anywhere between two fifty and three hundred, the city turns things, don't quote me, believe it, it's around.
Which is a reduced rate from what he normally charges on a private party matters, but since we're a public entity.
You get a reduced rate as a public entity.
Okay, and I guess the city's happy with the services, because they keep hiring to do these disciplinary hearings. Can you tell me, is Mr. Hullfish still an employee of the city?
Mr. Lockwood?
Yes, he is.
Yes, he is.
Is he currently suspended?
I don't know. There is another matter to be addressed with him, I don't know as I sit here whether he is suspended or not. But he is facing some additional discipline.
He's facing disciplinary disciplinary charges and details of which we will not, we cannot talk about because they're under.
But it's totally unrelated to what this hearing was.
Correct, it's unrelated.
Yes.
So he's gotten in trouble again?
Sounds like it.
Was he suspended as a result of this disciplinary hearing?
I believe he was.
Yes, he was.
And how long was that suspension?
It's a disciplinary matter, personnel of nature, so we're not gonna discuss that in context of the public.
Could be a half a day, could be a year, you won't tell the public how long this order, utilities.
He's still a treatment plant operator, correct?
Excuse me, he's working right now, Mr. Cradwell, so he's here.
He is not a treatment plant operator.
Was he a treatment plant operator?
I don't think so.
Okay, what is it?
He's been in the maintenance side of things for a while, and now he's in the distribution side of the business.
Okay, since the water director is here, could you ask the water director if he's currently suspended?
It's a personnel decision.
Okay, so now you won't even tell me if he's currently suspended or not?
I said I wasn't sure. I said he was facing additional discipline, but I wasn't sure.
Okay, and I have to ask, should we be concerned as the public about the quality of the drinking water, were any of these things that he's being charged with or disciplined for things that endangered the public or the drinking water supply?
I'm gonna say no, against that, please, yes, absolutely none.
Okay. I have to look into that more, but I have more questions about other things. Six thirty-one, can you tell me the name of the software that the police are buying?
Captain?
I do not know. Find out, Mr. Cradwell, is it in the backup, around the backup, is it? If not, I'll try and get the answer before.
I don't think it says.
Look at the answer for you, Mr. Cradwell.
Okay, so you could email me, could you email me the answer of what the name of the software is and what it's for? Thank you. The next one, I also want to ask about the arbitrator three sixty HD, is that a hard drive, is that what that is?
No, it's the in-camera, that he has, so to go into the first.
To go into the what?
Into the control parts, have it in camera, in the camera.
Oh, okay, so it's the dash can.
Okay. And the software that the police are buying from Taser International, can you tell me the name of the software?
I don't know the name of that software, it's digital friendly software to examine evidence that would be in specific digital, I don't know the name of the software.
The next one is one point four million dollars being transferred for the New Brunswick Landing Project, wasn't that project like done five or six years ago? Why is the million dollar, million point four being transferred now?
Because the grant money from the DEP is just arriving to the city, and it is eventual home is to reimburse the county for its expenses. We, if you recall, we applied for a one point nine million dollar DEP green acres loan and a one point nine million dollar green acres grant to be used towards that project. We're essentially the conduit between the DEP and the county on this.
And the money just got here now, that's why?
That's correct, the resolutions authorize the finance director to release that money.
So we just got the money now, Mr. Cradwell, and then we're releasing it to the county.
Okay. And the last one I'd like to ask about is six forty-two. Can you just explain what the purpose of this amendment is, the resolution, regarding any notes, bond anticipation?
Japetics, are you in here, are you out there?
Yes, sir. Actually, we contracted with Samuel Hyde and Company to prepare our preliminary official statement and our official statement, which we needed to do to sell the notes back in June.
Okay, and I have more questions later, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cradwell. Anybody else on the resolutions this evening? Anybody on the resolutions? Anybody? Seeing none?
The resolutions?
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming?
Yes.
Council President Egan?
Yes.
We held fourteen.
Yes, and this is what we know, we held, I didn't say that, we held six fourteen, just remember.
That was simply held because the police, well, I'm gonna tell you anyway, the police department didn't have a chance to sign off on it, the review it, the event's not till November sixth, so I hope we have under two weeks to post.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lockwood.
May I make one other comment?
Yes, sure.
I would like to recognize our new purchasing agent, her name is Marie James. Want to stand up, Marie? Our wonderful purchasing agent, for the past twenty years, Joanne DeTanza retired. Marie has been her assistant for ten years, maybe?
Thirteen.
Thirteen. And it was appropriate to promote her to the purchasing agent.
Congratulations on your promotion, keep up the good work, and I wish Joanne DeTanza was here, she's done a great job for the city of New Brunswick for twenty years, been a dear friend, and we're gonna miss her. So can you guys pass that along to her when you see her later, and we thank her? Thank you very much. Okay, we'll now move to the public portion of the meeting. Anybody who would like to address the council, please step up, five minutes, name and address.
Daniel Moore, one eighty-eight Broadway Street. Well, you know, back to school, you know, it's time for me to speak up, I'm a parent that will speak up about things. But wow, I see I missed a few things, nothing's being done. Would you be able to tell me when the, for Lee Avenue, Comstock Street, Lee Avenue and Delavan Street, crosswalk lighting system will be done? It was supposed to be done this summer when the kids were out?
Mr. Glenti?
Yes. We can speak to that, we have an issue with the contractor currently regarding a previous project where he hasn't completed, so we're making every effort to get that completed before we allow him to proceed. If he doesn't respond, then we're gonna take other action if we have to.
Yeah, so this was approved back in November two thousand fifteen.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Then also where, back in May, there was approved for Lee Avenue and Comstock, that was where an order was put through due to where they're having trouble with the cars parking on the corner. That was where the city said they approved the, put the, I keep forgetting what you call it, the orange sticks there, and it was not done before school returned.
We got that down, write that down, please. We're gonna get that done, can we get that?
Wow, so I see, after next year, I come to every meeting to keep the city brain refreshed, Tom.
Please.
Oh, believe me, I will, I see that now. That's also to make notice of, there was another car accident on the corner of Lee and Ward Street, that was the twenty-first of August. So I hope we will add that to the record of how many accidents right there in that area, what's going on. That was where the city did approve back in May, also for the corner of Lee and Lawrence, to put down the sticks for no parking on the corner due to where it's a blind zone. So would you be able to tell me?
Yes, Mr. Glenti?
I can address that. In fact, we have issued, the council approved, line striping contract, that line striping contract will be starting on Monday to follow our paving, but part of the project is we have numerous, if not every, crosswalk on Lee that's gonna be painted, and when we do the painting, we're gonna add the bollards at that time.
Okay, thank you. And then another question I have with going with Lee Avenue, that was where I said, wow, I wish I had my camera at all times. That's why I sent a picture to you of every corner from Lee and Howard going down towards the Red Street. That was where the corners are not made for a person in a wheelchair to go through, how I'm watching the young man and the parents, how they have to push him in the street due to where plenty of these corners are not ready for a wheelchair. So, so please.
I go again to all the orders, yes, Mr. Glenti?
I'm just trying to, actually, the city has applied to the state on three separate occasions for Lee Avenue for the municipal aid grant, and we've been denied three times in a row for Lee Avenue. There are some crosswalks that are, some are prepared, but she, Danielle, certainly corrected, there is a good number that are not. We'll have to come up with a budget for that. The Lee Avenue, the reconstruction, like we would do, would be probably close to a million-dollar project, so we're trying to figure out where to put that into the schedule.
Well, okay, I will say thank you, hope to see things done soon, thank you.
Thank you, listen. Yes, anybody else that can address the council this evening? Anybody else?
Good evening, once again, Charles Cradwell, New Brunswick, New Brunswick. Today, I wanted to ask some questions about violence in the city. Can you please ask the police, can they tell us how many shootings there were in August in the city?
I don't think he has that information with him at this time. Captain, do you know how many shootings there were in the form of the wars?
I do not.
Respectfully, I'd like to suggest that it would be in the best interest of the city for the police to have, at the very least, a monthly report made at these meetings that go over some of the basics, like how many shootings there were, how many people were shot, how many people were stabbed.
We'll take this under advisement.
And I honestly think that it's a shame that this department is not more transparent about these things. There was a shooting on August twenty-second, we know about it because journalists got the word out, and then the police put out a press release. There was a shooting just last week in the daytime in a parking lot of a supermarket, and again, people found out about it through the grapevine, and eventually the police put out a statement. We have no way of knowing for sure how many other shootings there've been, where they just don't tell us. And as a citizen, as a resident of this community, I think I deserve to know about the crimes that are happening and what the police are doing to combat that. I just think it's common sense, and I think if you go to most other town councils, city councils, there's a report from either the police or the person on the council who is in charge of that particular wheelhouse, that they give statistics, that they give regular updates. Is that something you would consider for these meetings, to just have a regular, you know, fact-based, honest update from the police department about the crime problem and what they're doing about it? Don't you think that would be beneficial?
To you, it would be beneficial, I think, right? You, that himself?
To the entire city.
Mr. Cradwell, I just told him, we'll take it under your advisement.
I've heard that before, you know, like, let's get real, this is a serious issue. People are being gunned down in the streets, and in the daytime, in parking lots. This is serious. And is it true that the building at the housing authority was hit with a bullet?
Captain, yes.
Okay, why didn't the captain answer my questions when I asked him that, when I emailed him to ask him that?
I don't know that. Captain, he doesn't have the whole day to answer your questions, Mr. Cradwell. One question, I got two questions. I mean, you only asked one question?
I asked two questions about the press release, I got no answer.
Listen, do I believe your title to the information you're entitled to? Yes, I do. But I don't think Mr. Captain Miller is trying to shun you in any way. He has other duties that he has to perform at the police department than answering, you know, New Brunswick today's, you know, requests. Captain, would you like to respond, or do what?
I do have other things I do besides answering all these questions, hold on.
Well, then perhaps, I mean, I'm not asking him to work all day long, but perhaps if he can't handle the responsibility, someone else should be responsible for it. I'm not a diss to him or anything, but he's got a lot of things to do, and perhaps somebody else in the department could be the PIO, who will actually respond to reporters who ask questions about press releases that the department puts out. I asked you.
Maybe somebody else in New Brunswick today will get better responses, maybe you should give it to somebody else, maybe I'd like to talk to somebody else, and you're buying work. Maybe you're shunning your responsibilities. Yes, Captain Miller?
A lot of times, and I'm not gonna speak per incident specific, but Mr. Cradwell sends emails minutes after the incident occurs, I am not prepared to release information at that time. I wrote Mr. Cradwell a lengthy letter in one of his overrequests last week, where I just explained to him how giving out information too soon can be dangerous. He published in one of his articles that the police gave out wrong information, or that's not correct. It was information that was given out prematurely and the information we had at the time. I explained to him how the information changed, and I gave him the correct information. Unfortunately, he likes to publish things to make him look good instead of, and make other people look bad. Again, the police department gives out information as necessary, and so it will not jeopardize ongoing investigations. I am comfortable saying now that the housing authority building was struck by a bullet. At the time of Mr. Cradwell's ask, I was not comfortable releasing that information.
Thank you, Captain.
Okay, so I thought he wasn't gonna talk about a specific incident, but then he kind of seemed like he was talking about a specific incident. I just, in that specific incident, was the information that he originally gave me accurate?
It was accurate, as we knew it at the time, we, through our investigation, we found out it was not accurate and it changed, and I clarified that with you specifically.
Right, only after I clarified.
However, you failed to put that in your article that I, what I wrote. You just said the police made a mistake.
Truth is the truth, I mean, I'd be happy to review the article with the captain if there's still an issue with the article, but.
The truth is the truth.
So, you know, if you give information that's not accurate, you could call it premature, but it's also wrong, it's not accurate, that's the definition of wrong, so. So I have one more question about the shooting at the Aldi parking lot. Was the crash shortly thereafter at Park Boulevard and Easton Avenue that took out the light pole, was that related? Was that the vehicle that had the victims in it?
I'm not prepared to discuss that at this time.
Not prepared to discuss that at this time.
Okay, and have the police figured out who the perpetrators are?
I don't think, prepared to answer that at this time either, but I'm just guessing. Go ahead, Captain.
I'm in the case of I'm knowing, the information I know, I'm not prepared to speak to the public about.
Okay, I mean, respectfully, I think the department could do more to be transparent, even if it's just giving statistics and saying, hey, you know, we solved this many crimes out of the crimes that happened, and here's what we're doing to improve that. I think every citizen would benefit, I don't think that's a controversial thing, and I don't think that the council should stand in the way, that I think you should push for it, I think you should ask for it, and ask the department, hey, once in a while, the director could even show up and speak to the people himself. I have to ask about the city employees who are suspended, so now we know Mr. Hullfish is not suspended, but he has another matter pending. Is Dell Walker still suspended?
Yes, he is.
Yes, he is.
Without pay. Is it true he's been arrested again?
I've heard rumor to that, but I have, to that effect, but I've not seen it substantiated.
Okay, and there's another gentleman at the fire department that was suspended, is he still suspended?